Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 13th City Council Work Session Meeting. It's good to see everyone. It feels like it's been three or four weeks last time that we met. I know we have a lot to discuss. Before we turn it over to Beau, talk about homelessness study, just want to say that we just, our thoughts and prayers go out to Allen and his entire family. He does a lot for the city for a long time and just sending our care to him and his family today. With that, I'll turn it over to Beau for the homelessness study.
All right, good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item on the work session agenda this evening is a presentation by VM Advising regarding the homelessness study. At this time, I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Ginger Blunt-Moore to introduce VM Advising and kick off the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jonathan Danforth and Sean Griffith from VM Advising Consulting present findings this evening. They are going to be here virtual from the Virginia Peninsula Homelessness Study. This was commissioned by the City of Newport News. The recommendations informed by the study's findings will then be shared with Council, and the two of them will be available after the presentation for a question and answer.
Greetings. It's nice to see everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, I'm going to move into full screen of presentations. Give me just a moment, if it'll allow me. Okay, so Jonathan and I are here today to talk about the key findings and recommendations from the homelessness study we conducted on the Virginia Peninsula in 2024. First, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the City of Newport News, the mayor, city manager, and this council for commissioning this study. We also had a number of partners and localities that participated in the study that really made it robust, including City of Hampton, York County, City of Williamsburg, James City County, PCOSAN, the Planning Council, and the Greater Virginia Peninsula Homeless Consortium. So we also want to extend our thanks to everyone for participating in this study. So these are the core study objectives. Number one was to analyze the root causes of homelessness on the Virginia Peninsula. Number two was to assess services and understand how well those services are working and identify gaps in those services. And number three is the ability to optimize resources and maximize the impact of the resources that are available on the peninsula. So our approach to the study first involved a literature review of differ, different documents that were available regarding the governance structure and the local continuum of care, also the Commission on Homelessness. It also included different historical planning documents, whether it was the tenure plan to end homelessness, the update to that plan, and then the current plan for the Greater Virginia Peninsula Homelessness Consortium. We also used quantitative methodology. This included data collection from multiple sources, including census data, differing data sets from the homeless response system, and also zoning from each of the different localities that participated in the study. We use this for descriptive analysis, to be able to forecast need moving forward, and for geospatial visualization. Quantitative methods include interviews, interviews with individuals, participant observation, and then transcription and analysis of those interviews, as well as focus groups. A big piece of the study was community. There were two public forums that were held, one in the northern peninsula in the city of Williamsburg, and one in the southern end of the peninsula in Newport News. There are four focus groups. These were geographically spread as well between the north and south of the peninsula. Two of those focus groups were with frontline staff and those that are interacting from the homeless response system perspective. The other two focus groups were with individuals with lived experience of homelessness accessing services. And again, that was geographically equitable. We also did one debrief with persons with lived experience when we got to the end of the study and were making our recommendations. We wanted to ensure that those individuals that participated in the system modeling who had lived experience were going to affirm the recommendations that we were coming to, which they did. Then lastly, was a community survey that was out for the entire Virginia Peninsula for roughly three or four weeks. Then lastly, was a system modeling technical team. This helped us identify gaps within the system and do the projections for needed beds, whether that be rapid rehousing, permanent support of housing, and things of that nature. So these are some of our core findings related to root causes of homelessness on the Virginia Peninsula. Since 2019, we've seen very high rental and home value inflation, and Newport News and Hampton experienced the highest proportional increases. And the other core concern that came from this finding was that of all the zip codes that were analyzed within the data set, those that were most affordable were the ones that saw the highest proportional increases, and those zip codes were in Newport News and Hampton. Additionally, when we conducted the zoning analysis, what we found is that there's limited multifamily housing zones for development. On a positive note, the largest proportion of multifamily housing zones is in Newport News. So Newport News is definitely carrying their weight in this area. Then lastly, we found that one out of five individuals experiencing homelessness has severe mental illness or chronic substance abuse. So there's definitely a need for services that can support individuals with those issues. But on the opposite side of that coin, the majority of individuals that are experiencing homelessness on the peninsula do not have these issues and need other support systems that are going to get them back into housing quickly. Concerning the state of homelessness on the peninsula, what we see is that homelessness is increasing. When we analyzed four kids housing crisis line data, we did a projection and found that we project a 15% increase in call volume from households that are considered literally homeless under HUD's definition, and that will likely translate to increases in homelessness overall within differing data sets that are available within the homeless response system moving forward. We also found that throughout a given year, there's more than 2,000 individuals experiencing homelessness, and that Newport News and Hampton share the greatest burden of individuals experiencing homelessness on the peninsula. And then, concerningly, we found increasing rates of households that are considered first-time homeless. We also found that over time, there are higher income brackets that are falling into homelessness, likely due to that housing cost inflation. We're also seeing higher acuity, and by acuity we mean individuals that are more vulnerable and have greater needs within the system, that we're having longer durations of homelessness as well to accompany that acuity. And then lastly, that we're seeing a significant racial disparity for persons of color within the homeless response system. And these are seven core recommendations that we came to based off our findings. First is the need to make structural changes that drive collective impact within the homeless response system. And at the core of this recommendation is creating something called a system transformation plan that is going to guide those structural changes and implement them. Number two is to fortify commitment to a regional homeless response system. And within this recommendation, it requires a commitment of all housing resources to the local coordinated entry system. Number three is expand access to housing for households with the most barriers. We recommend that emergency shelter investments are delayed until the rapid rehousing and PSH system goals are met and those projections were made within system modeling. Number four is invest in a regional financial strategy for the entire peninsula, and this regional funding alignment needs to have a shared vision and commitment from all the localities around what the homeless response system is going to look like and function like. Number five is eliminate barriers to services and promote client-centered culture system-wide. In doing this, the continuum of care needs to develop written standards and policy and procedures that are going to reinforce this commitment. Number six is develop an unsheltered response strategy to address homelessness holistically and to reduce punitive responses. Within this is to create a regional outreach strategy because we are seeing a significant gap in services related to outreach coverage across the peninsula. And then lastly, is to pursue long-term housing solutions, which one of the core recommendations in that section being alteration of zoning codes to promote higher-density housing. And this would involve reduction of single-family zones and increasing missing middle and high-density zones across the peninsula. Back out. Questions?
Sean, Ms. Mayor Jones, thank you for that presentation. Can you go back to Slide seven? I'll turn it over to Councilman Long to answer the first question. Thank you.
Everyone, can you slide seven?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the study that was developed. It was really in depth, helped me to understand the demographics of our population that is unhoused. A particular section I really enjoy was the section related to how people become unhoused. And there's a stigma, I think, between people are unhoused because of mental illnesses or substance abuse. But the study revealed domestic violence, affordable housing, and loss of jobs is the main driver for the people that become unhoused. I particularly am really interested in making sure that we do create that system that's going to create the long-term sustainability. And this question really is a comment, kind of pivots towards our housing study, making sure that when we develop our strategies for our housing study, we look at that study that was done before with the lens of this homeless study, because I think there's some intersections, particularly as it relates to the senior population as well as the affordable housing. So I really do appreciate the study. I think we can take it, and I think the region is going to really look at how we can work towards a regional response to address homelessness in the community, but make a more long-term sustainability so a person that's unhoused that can actually move back into sustainability here in the community.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or thoughts from City Council at this time?
I did have a question, and forgive me if I missed this during your presentation, but it was mentioned that Newport News Hampton shares the greatest burden of the unhoused population. Was there a, some way to capture data in regards to whether it's first-time homeless, losing your home, what have you? Were they are, was that population prior, living in Newport News prior to them becoming unhoused? And if not, is there a number or way to capture people that come into the city to utilize like Fort Oaks and other resources here in the area that migrate from out of the area?
Sure. So the first part of that question, we were not able to see that level of granularity with the individuals within the system. We essentially used an old pick count report given to us from the Planning Council. It's probably one that you all have received, where it had a jurisdictional breakdown of the pick count by the different localities. The first-time homeless data comes from a different data set. It's called system performance measures, and it's not broken out by individual localities. So at this time, we don't have that level of granularity. Additionally, for the transient, I think, population that you're speaking to, at this moment in time, it's my understanding that HMIS does not have the ability to track that in a good way based on where folks are coming from. And I would actually have to direct that question back to the Planning Council for that understanding. But I know it was something that we asked early on, and it wasn't something that we were able to track in the study.
I'll add as well, just that ad-egotively, we heard many different explanations for who, from where, folks receiving services. And so we made a decision not to come to a definitive conclusion about what our stance is on where are people coming from and why, because there were just so many different versions of the explanation. We know some folks are concerned about people coming from neighboring communities, and then other folks say, well, we really see that everyone is, that the majority of service recipients are local. And so we just couldn't quite come to a thread that had any like statistical significance on, but it was what we had.
Any other comments from City Council? Okay, Sean, Jonathan, I think we're good. Thank you so much for doing the study. I know there's like a much more detailed report that Council is seeing, but we thank you, and we'll, we have next steps on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next up, we are going to have the fiscal year 2026 operating budget reconciliation adjustments. I know Council has already gone through a bit as a group. I really just, let me use this mic. I really just want to talk through two things. One, I think we have a better process than last year. I think we decided it probably two or three weeks ago. So I just thank you for everyone for doing the timelines. I do want to just read through four or five different things for the future. I talked to our, talked to Ms. Lisa, and she appreciates us talking about what the plan is for next year. So I'm not going to read everything, but just talk about the main categories. So also for the record, so the five or six things that we're going to take a look at as we build the budget for next year is number one, the vacant position review. So I know we have a lot of vacant positions. Some need to be closed. Some can remain open. Number two, we're going to talk more about Councilman Harris, the Peninsula Airport Commission and that support. I have the PAC meeting on Thursday. Future tax planning to bake the budget at at least a 3% reduction for next year. That's like a zero-based budget, and we'll start that process next year, as well as a potential reduction in overhead. So from all departments, including City Council, depending on federal cuts, et cetera, a potential 5%, not from salaries, but from operating costs and overhead. So those are the five or six categories. I just want to say thank you for, for all your help, and hopefully we have a good and budget, a better process next year as well. Any questions, comments on that? Okay, we're going to go straight to comments, ideas, suggestions. I actually want to start with Councilman Coleman, and I'll throw it to you. I know there's been some discussion about the festivals that we have in different parts of the city, and I wanted to give Councilman Coleman opportunity to talk to Council.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to speak for a moment about historic Hilton Village. I think everybody in this room is probably familiar with that neighborhood. It's one of the oldest neighborhoods here in the city of Newport News, and I'm a former resident of the neighborhood, and just a great place to live. And I think it's a great representation of what Newport News is all about, and the rich history of Newport News and the sense of community inclusiveness. And not only are there residents that live in this, in the Hilton Village neighborhood, but we have a number of businesses that are, that are lined up and positioned there in our commerce corridor along Ward Boulevard. So it's just a great example of what we probably refer to as a mixed-use community now. And, and on top of that, the community has come together and they host several community events during the year, you know, Spring Festival, the Fall Festival, Fourth of July Parade. They have a fantastic farmer's market every Saturday. I think many, many of my council colleagues have gone through there. But the city currently supports one of the events that is an annual event there. And I want to thank Councilman Ely for helping, you know, pushing, pushing the charge last year of supporting the gingerbread festival. And I think it's a great festival. It's around Christmas time. But I think that, I think we could probably enhance the experience, not only for the citizens of Hilton, but for the entire city and probably for the region, if we took those, you know, took that support from the one event and then dispersed it among the other four major events that they currently have going on. And I think that that would not only, like I said, enhance quality of life for our citizens, but also give some great opportunities for our small business owners that have decided to, you know, plant their roots here in the city of Newport News. So I would just ask that the council and the manager to look into that. And I think it's currently in the budget already, but if we can make some consideration on that moving forward, I would greatly appreciate it.
And, and as a reminder, City Council, I think this group, minus Councilman Coleman, at our last summer retreat, we sort of made the rule, we're going to do one sponsored event per district. I think now we're starting to say, maybe we, we can add it to two. There's multiple things that we can do. I think Hilton, just in order of proximity, they have an event coming up here pretty soon. So if we could just move on this sooner rather than later, and maybe have sent some emails discussion about it. We don't want to change the rules, but it's better if we had that one event, we just split it in four in the central district.
Yeah, we're not asking about adding any more support to the rest of the events, just redistributing the current support from the one event to the other four current events that they have scheduled.
Okay. And we'll go, we'll start with Councilman Harris, and then just go around. Any comments, any suggestions? Okay. Anything else, Councilman Coleman?
No, sir. Well, I just really wanted to update or just bring a report from Virginia First Cities. I chaired my first meeting for Virginia First Cities, and we had several speakers within the group, but the main thing is everybody is talking about the same thing with the federal cuts. Everybody's saying that communities, localities are going to have to do more because people are going to be more in need, whether it relates to housing, as we just heard, jobs. So I know we need to be prepared to do what we can as a locality, because that's what everybody is kind of waiting for, to see what's going to happen from all the things that are happening in the federal government. And that's all I have.
Nothing, sir.
You want to talk about the Juneteenth celebrations or at a later time?
Well, I could talk about it. I had the opportunity to work with Parks Recreation, city staff about Juneteenth Festival. We got a great lineup. We're excited about it. The community is excited about it. We had the opportunity to work with the Communications Department to go on all the TV shows, news channels, radio stations, and everybody's excited. Say the word with all the stations is Newport News is leading the way. So I was glad to hear that great announcement, and great to work with Communications and Parks and Recreation to make this event come to life.
And I would say I was getting my haircut, and they said, John gave a great interview. So I saw the interview. It was, it was, it was well done, John.
And also special thanks to Beau and Ginger, those are the ones who really made it happen. And also special thanks to Beau and Ginger, those are the ones who really made it happen. So thank you all too as well.
Thank you.
I just have two comments. I don't need to answer tonight. One is, well, they both relate to bills that were just passed. One was the eviction diversion program. It was a pilot program last year. Now it's a program that the courts can utilize across the state. I don't know if there's any action the Council has to do, a letter to courts, or if there's any action that we need to do. And the second one relates to the real estate tax exemption and deferral for elderly and disabled. There was some rules that were changed. Just want some understanding of what those rules changed. Will that change our ordinance that we have currently set? Do we need to have taken any action? And then secondly, I think there's been some confusion, especially around the senior population, on utilizing that program for their tax deferral or exemption. So if we can just get a better understanding of how that program works, so that way when individuals will talk or bring up that question, we can better answer that. That's all I have.
Got you. Actually, to piggyback off of Councilman Coleman, I've been receiving requests in regards to Denby Day. So if we could communicate with the Lions Club sooner rather than later on who and how we're going to coordinate that, I think it would be beneficial to them and us, and also set the expectation going forward. Yes, that's it.
Okay, I'll wrap up. I just have a few things. Number one, these long mics, let's go back to the short mics if we, if we can. Yeah, no, it's pretty bad. So if we could go back to that. The second thing is I want to double down on Councilman Coleman's comments. With Hilton Village, yes, I'm biased because I live there, but they're doing a lot with this Main Street program, and that's, I think, the Fourth of July and those events, those aren't just a central or really the South District. It's really all of the city. So let's find some ways to probably expand the pie, not only for Hilton, but also for Denby Day and the Southeast Parade. So I think those festivals, those parades add flavor to the city, so we can definitely make sure we continue to invest in those things. I have one form that we're going to vote on tonight. Did you want to talk about the process for, in two weeks, for all of the CSAG?
Yes. Is Tiffany in here?
She's right there. Okay, so while Tiffany does that, the one event, or the one thing we're going to vote on today is from the Rich Neck Elementary School Archery Program. I have all of the signatures, this as a reminder, we said it three weeks ago, now we're going to vote on it. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. You had to read it or do you want to?
No, I can go over real quick.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor at this time.
Yeah, so basically, thank you, everyone, for the quick response to the email and us doing our end-of-year council contingency support. The requests are all right here. What we need to do now is circulate the signatures, and then at the next council meeting, the mayor will do the reading, and in the meeting following that, we will vote on these. And so I think going forward, this is going to be a great way for us to continue to support organizations that are doing phenomenal work in the community. And so I'm extremely grateful to be on this team and us always celebrating those organizations.
No, that's good. And I think as we do this again and again, I think the ability to provide micro grants to these nonprofits, I think that's, that's the whole point of being on council, like the ones that are doing their work, let's just continue to invest into them. So I think that's all I have. One, two, three, we're good? Yep.
Yeah, just real quick, just want to remind all our citizens about our upcoming first-ever community survey. The Newport News speaks, leaders listen. That's an opportunity for their input to directly influence our, our next five-year strategic plan that we'll be working on, as well as future budget priorities. The survey is open to all residents through May the 20th. So, and I think we're going to have Council reach out as much as they can as well to get more, as much participation as we can. And one other good point with that is we've been invited to be present on the Hampton Road Show, so that will be taking place here in the next couple of days.
Okay, and with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Mayor, how much was the archery program?